We're doing via Zoom. Welcome to Planning Board Meeting, February, August 12, 2020. This meeting is being televised by Chumsford Telemedia and being conducted remotely. I guess the first thing we got is administrative reviews. Bond release for 44 Westford Street Realty Trust. Arlene's Way requests a release of the bond.
Motion for release. It looks like everybody signed off.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope.
All right, Bob. Bob's on line.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, so the next one we have is Katrina Road. Requestments to endorse my laws. J.J. McCarthy LLC for the property location. The property is located in a limited industrial zone. The project proposes a two-story, 14,000-square-foot building, 45 vehicle parking spots, 69 bus parking spots, associated improvements in purpose operating a bus transportation and maintenance facility. This is the same thing we went through a couple of years ago. Nancy made it in. Any questions? This is endorsement of the my laws.
I think my thought on it from the last meeting was that it's basically the same as that thing up on...
But what I've been told is that since they've been cleaning up the waste and having a plant there and been doing something, that they've actually been doing something. There hasn't been nothing being done.
Right.
But that all, that thing up on the other road got turned over anyways.
It did. All right. That was just my confusion on it. And I asked like three different engineers the question.
Yeah.
And the answer that I got back is they shouldn't be able to be doing any work up there that requires a permit because they don't have an approved planning board plan until the my laws are signed and it's at the registry of deeds.
Yeah.
That's just a little food for thought.
Sean is allowing it.
Sean's allowing it, so I don't care. Do whatever you want to do. It's easy enough.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, fine. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Should get a finger up.
Aye.
All right.
Nancy can talk.
She can talk now?
Oh, she muted it.
I'm on and off.
We can't shut her up that easy. Boston Road and Conquered Road, the town of Chumsford. Conquered Road and Boston Road intersection improvements is taking lands and easements. Do we have Christina around to explain this? Christina, you got the floor?
Yes, thank you. So the intersection at Boston and Conquered Road is being improved with the help of DOT and a DOT grant. And the easements for the new right-of-way are presented in the plan. And administratively, I'd need a signature on the my laws.
How many square feet are involved in all this?
In all of the easements?
Yeah, all of the stuff that's...
I can pull up the plan.
Yeah, but just a rough... I imagine it's not much.
I mean, each property has, you know, some of them have like 200, 300 square feet. Some are more substantial, 1,000 square feet. The Triangle property has the most taking. I don't know how much it is, but they're all easements. Most of them are temporary easements just for the purpose of construction. And some of them are permanent easements because we're improving the sidewalks. And there's the new culvert that's going in to replace the antiquated one that needs replaced. And the additional signage and things like that.
So this is where the Triangle gas station, Triangle repair or whatever.
Correct. Is all the people that are being affected by this in agreement with it?
They have all been notified per the DOT guidelines on what exactly is happening. We've had meetings with anybody who has been interested in having a meeting. And they've, all of the properties have been appraised. And the, all the appraisals have also been checked. So we get two, kind of two appraisals for each property. A review of each appraisal gets done as well. And that's all per DOT guidelines. And they've all been notified of what their, what their areas are that are going to be taken for easement, whether they're going to be permanent or temporary. And haven't had any, any issues.
Okay.
So what's in green is being taken?
Yeah, so the color-coded plan just kind of helps illustrate, you know, per property what is going to be taken as easements, whether it be temporary or permanent.
The Triangle gas station's losing a lot, huh?
Yeah, well, is that mostly temporary for them or...?
So the Triangle gas station has that huge culvert that really goes right underneath the parking area in the front. So in order to get a new culvert installed to replace...
Yeah, you got to dig right across.
...the old culvert is, obviously we need, you know, a couple of feet on each side to be able to work and get the culvert in. So some of it is temporary for that work. But then it would become a permanent easement. So the town would be able to maintain that culvert under the Triangle property. And it would be, so it's kind of just getting it straight in the books that it is a town-owned easement and that's our culvert and we're going to take care of it.
Okay, so they're all easements and not takings?
There's two small takings in the blue, I believe it's called. I believe that's the color that you know. And they're small. One is only due to a head wall and the other one is because of sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you know, we're not believing them with the head walls.
They're not losing any property over it, so they just...
Right, yeah.
All right.
All right, well...
I'll give you a motion for it in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mike, and I just think I heard Nancy. Donald, we heard you.
Aye.
Aye, all right. I think we got everybody.
Roll call it.
Okay, thank you.
We had the roll call. We did everybody here. Everybody said that I did Donald and him, so you need a roll call after that?
On video, yes.
All right, Nancy, you got the floor. Historic preservation.
Oh, okay. Well, let me go open up a document here then.
Well, I'll give everybody just a little rundown with this new historic preservation bylaw. This is a new zoning bylaw, historic preservation, for the purpose of providing zoning options to regulate and preserve the reusing of historic structures. For the purpose of zoning and regulations to preserve... It's up to you, Nancy. I'll try to give you another couple of seconds.
Thank you a lot. So this is not my submittal, but I have done some...
Oh, she froze.
Edits on it based on a review by the Historical Commission. So the copy that you have with the minutes, with the agenda tonight, has been edited from the original that was submitted in this cycle. The changes that were made are primarily around incorporating formal feedback into, formal input of the Historical Commission into this process. So the original proposal that came, that came in was basically put all of the assessment responsibilities in the hands of the planning board. And the current draft requires the, the recommendation of applicability and the qualification for historic preservation into, back into the hands of the Chumsford Historical Commission. There's a few other edits in here of significance. One is in definitions. And I added a new, I ran some edits. I changed the new lot to a bonus lot and added a definition for a conforming lot. And the reason for doing that is that, as it was originally written, target, target properties on large lots would not be able to use this bylaw at all in order to capture them for preservation. So if a lot had more than the, twice the requirements for zoning in that area, in the area that it was in, in the district, it would not be able to use this because you wouldn't be able to separate off additional conforming lots because the bylaw is written and only allowed it to be separated into the parent lot and the new lot. So for instance, if you had something on five acres in an RB, under, under the first draft of this, you could only separate that into two. Under conforming separation without this bylaw, you could separate it into five. So there's, there would be no incentive whatsoever for the owner to put it under preservation restrictions. So this closes that loophole. The, in section 114, the edits that were made permitted both the parent lot and the, what is now called the bonus lot, the new lot, to be half-sized. In the original, only the parent lot that kept the historical structure was allowed to be half-sized. And when I did some research on the number of properties that could use it, it was so small that it wasn't worth writing a new bylaw. So if we expect to get any kind of value out of this at all, both, both lots need to be able to be half-sized. The, in reviewing it with the Historical Commission, they felt that it's really imperative to get this through at this time, that they're having a lot of trouble with developers coming in and, and looking to tear down very valuable, very old properties. And in order to get it to pass, they recommended that we limit the construction date of the property to no later than 1800. So this was originally written for, I don't know, anything that was of historic significance, which in our town is 75 years old. As modified, this applies to a much smaller number of properties. It basically goes to the properties that are 1700s and 1600s and 1700s.
Basically that list that you sent out?
The list that is attached to the agenda.
Yeah.
Yep. So it's not very many properties. I mean, it's still not very many properties. But hopefully we can get it to pass because of the criticality of the properties that are included. See what else is in here.
And the...
Rear lots. I did some cleanup that was more consistent with some of the concerns we had put in last fall, particularly the, the need to limit the minimum, minimum width on rear, on rear lots because of the problems we've been seeing with developers coming in with really weird-shaped lots in order to get another house on the lot. And I also made it compatible, did a little bit of editing to make it, it align with the rear lot, sub, rear lot bylaw. So now it's clean and it's, it's compatible with it. The requirement that the Historical Commission provide the criteria for repair, restoration, and modifications to the historic structure. And a requirement that those repairs be complete before either one of the properties that are created by this is issued an occupancy permit. So you can't go build the second new house and just leave the old one sit there.
Don't like that.
And let's see, at the very end, just a formal statement of what the deliverables are from the Historical Commission in order to support an approval to use this bylaw. So that's the summary of edits that came out of the review with the Historic Commission. You should have attached or linked to the agenda, a clean copy of that. I'm looking at the moment at the review copy with the edits in it. So I'm able to go down and tell you exactly what changed. I would, I guess I would end it with saying that 1800 really doesn't... Setting the limits on the date for 1800 really doesn't cover very many properties. I believe that it should be a later date. I don't however, think that we should put a later date in this art, Town Meeting article. I think we should follow this up with a second article on the agenda for the same Town Meeting. And I would recommend that article to change the date to 1900 and allow the floor to roll it backwards to wherever they're comfortable with. You can't roll it forward in a floor motion because that expands the scope of the article, but you can always roll it back. Consequently, if we, if we let this one go forward with 1800 and get it through, we have some substance and then we can go fish with the second article to find out where people's limits are.
Yeah. All right, and you said we're going to get a letter from Historic Board and they're going to be behind this?
I'm expecting to. We do have, I did notice that we have Historical Commission represented on this, on this Zoom call. So it, I would recommend that you give the floor to them and let them, you know, tell you where they're at.
All right. Unless anybody's got any questions for, I'll open this up for a public meeting.
Who's presenting this at the article at Town Meeting? Is it the Planning Board or is it the Historical Commission?
It'll most likely be the Planning Board. Historic usually has somebody standing right next to you as you're doing it.
Okay.
I do have one, one question and it's a procedural question. I'm not, I don't know how modifying a motion with another motion is going to work. We probably ought to get a read on that. Certainly, as Nancy pointed out, you couldn't on the floor make an amendment to the first motion to move the date up because that would expand it. I would not be surprised, but there may be some limitations about what we can do with a second motion. And we probably ought to find out, you know, if anybody's inclined to, to bring a second motion to change that date. And I certainly would be inclined to do it if it's possible. We ought to find out what the procedure really needs to be.
All right.
I don't know.
We might be better off just let it ride for the winter.
Yep.
Go for it in the spring.
I would think, I would think that we could take forward a second article for consideration at Town Meeting that then modified the, the first article. It has been done before.
Okay.
But I don't know. I mean...
Well, we just ought to get a... We just ought to get a check on it, that's all.
Too late to get another article in?
I'm sure we'll, we'll find out in a moment, but is it historic perspective? They should be at 1800?
I believe, go ahead.
Can I answer? Historical is looking, we put the cutoff at 1800 because those are our oldest, those are our most endangered houses. I think we always thought from talking to Nancy that maybe at a future Town Meeting, we would try to extend that to maybe 1900. But we just wanted to save the oldest ones at this point. That's, that's our thinking.
Okay, all right.
So, so I think, Don, the issue is that it's critical to get something approved. And we don't necess, we don't really think we can get 1900 approved, but it's a starting point for negotiation. But we want to get that first article to pass this time. We've tried twice before and haven't been able to do it. And this is dramatically stripped down. So we're hoping that we can actually get it to pass.
How many homes will fall into that 1900 basket?
There's a list that's on your agenda of every single house in town. It's not many.
For the 1800, going to 1800, there are 39 properties that this bylaw would help.
And what about 1900?
I don't have those numbers, do you, Nan?
Right.
I, I don't, but I tend to think it's somewhere in the 250 range from, from what I can remember from last fall. I don't have it on this computer.
Okay.
I'm kind of, kind of thinking to let it ride at the 1800 and then change it in the spring because if you throw too much at Town Meeting...
Yeah.
They're going to block on it and they're going to say, hey, you're trying to pull something over again.
That's a good strategy. I mean, I would agree that it's a decent...
Let it sit for six months and, and go back. Six, the winter goes by so fast.
Okay.
It's going to be here before you even know it.
Why isn't the Historical Society presenting, Kevin?
Usually it's a zoning, it's a zoning...
Yeah, zoning comes through us.
It's a zoning article. Colleen, you said we got some people who want to speak?
I do. We have Deb Tervana first.
I was speaking.
You didn't identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to make some comments?
We know who you are.
Deb, now's your chance.
Deb Tervana, 109 Verroca Road, Historical Commission. We just, we don't want to lose any more of our oldest homes. And we do have some that are in danger now because they sit on lots that are big enough to, to add houses. Or, you know, if they knock that house down, then they have a lot big enough to do what they're looking to do. We figure 1800 and older would just, that's a starting point. We realize that there are some houses dated after 1800 that we also are worried about. But we have to start someplace. And like Nan said, this has already been voted down twice.
Okay.
All right, Brian Strip, 90 High Street. Go ahead, Brian.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks for, for taking this up again tonight. Just to reiterate what Deb said, we've, we've been working at this, as we all know, for a while. This, as it's currently written, is basically only covers 39 properties. It's a great start. I think you know, the impetus was 47 Boston Road, trying to save that. And if we can get this passed, it'll, it will save those and hopefully the other 38. And then, like we said, with the, with the intent to come back later on and then expand it to 1900 and get some of the other, you know, very historic properties in town covered as well. But we all agree, this is a, this would be a good start and we think this would be more palatable for the Town, at Town Meeting. So we appreciate your, your support of this as well. Thank you.
All right, Colleen.
Maura Snow from 41 Old Stage Road.
Hello. I just have a quick clarification question. Trying to understand how does this, how does this protect the properties from developers? It just, I, I need a layperson's understanding of how doing this will protect the properties. And also can somebody tell me why the Town Meeting voted it down before?
I think I'll let Nancy answer that.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, so it protects the properties by providing a economic bonus to the owner to place that property under historic preservation restrictions and restore the outside of the property. It provides those economic incentives by creating the ability to add another house to the property. Because we don't allow two houses on one property, that means splitting the properties. Virtually all of these houses sit on properties that are, they're conforming in size today, but they are not big enough to split. If they are not conforming in size today, they would not qualify under this property. And we do have a lot of other properties, as you can see on that attached list, that cannot qualify under this because they're already on lots that are too small. The reason it was voted down is because it creates the opportunity for additional development that is denser than our standard zoning. And there is a lot of feelings in town about increasing density.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. So this allows the homeowner the economic incentive to keep the property, to retain it as historical property. And if they want to put other housing on it for their own good, they can, but keeps it from going into the hands of developers who would make it more dense.
That's correct.
Okay, and the town would prefer that there be more density allowed on these properties? Or at least the people who voted it down?
What the, what the Historical Commission wants is they want to have an ability to save the older property and have some restrictions over it. So that you could basically keep the old, the, the house with the historic look that you originally got with the house. And they don't want it turned into a modern home. And that's basically what we're looking at.
All right. I think I got it now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else calling?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Well, this is our second meeting, a third meeting on this.
Do you think it's time for a motion?
Yeah, no, but I mean, I, we closed it, I didn't let it close last time because I wanted to get some public input in historic.
Can I ask a silly question?
Sure.
Why not if you wanted to reach 1900? Why not go for 1850 or why, why does it start? Is there a reason why it's like 1800 then 1900?
They figure it's going to be easy to get the 1800 through. Because you're only talking 39 pieces of property.
Gotcha. I was just thinking like 1850 still sounds real old to me.
Yeah. Well, it's a...
And it's getting you...
Right. Well, like you were saying, you get a bite at it now. Yeah. And then a year down the road or six months down the road, you go in and say, hey, we really should bump this up to 1900 because there's another 100 and something properties, or 200 properties that we could save. Or leave it the way it is and...
Okay, just was curious and why.
Plus the fact it also gets people to try it a little bit too to see.
Yeah, see how it works. And, and, you know, it's, it's also an interesting business considering what your limiting times ought to be. For example, if we're going to be 1850, it might as well be 1840. Do you want to include Victorian or not? Now, Victorian's going to start you late 1830s, 1840. That nominally takes you up to about 1905, you know, so. It, there, there are interesting decisions involved in which, which dates you use. You know, so, there are interesting decisions involved in which dates you use to separate.
There's a lot of other towns that have done on some...
Yeah, they've done it, and they have various different dates. I mean, you can go up to the First World War and get your Edwardian stuff in. You might want to include, some people might be interested in including Prairie and, you know, Sears kit homes. Well, that would push you a little later, and that all has to be thought about.
All right.
Henry, I'm being asked if you guys can talk into the mics. Mike's the only one coming through really nice.
You want a motion to close the public hearing?
I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
I would second it.
We got a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nancy and Mike, Nancy and Donald did come through as an...
Aye.
All right. All in favor, I guess.
What do we do with this? A motion to endorse this?
For the Town, for the Town Meeting?
Is that the motion would...
If you feel that the language is finished, Evan's here, too. Evan, what do we, where are we?
We're making a motion to recommend for the next inclusion in the upcoming warrant, which will likely be Fall Town Meeting.
Make a motion so noted.
Yeah. And I'll second it.
All those...
And I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
Good.
All right, so I think all we got left is some meeting minutes. Get my glasses back on to read this.
Meeting minutes?
I don't actually...
Can I actually ask a question, too, about the Center Village Committee about bringing them in? I think we talked about it, Evan, a couple meetings ago, about having a meeting about the parking down there. You know, I guess they're getting, you know, bonuses for developing there, which I think that bonuses were given because of having that parking lot. So, and I wanted to talk to them, I wanted to see their opinion on the height of the building, stuff like that. Is there a way that we can have a representative come in for a meeting?
So, Center Village hasn't met since March. Back then, they were discussing and exploring parking options. They are interested in meeting with the Planning Board dating back to March to talk about parking and the town's visions for moving forward with parking management in the center. When it, when it comes to specific projects in the center that are in front of the Planning Board, the Center Village Master Planning Committee has not taken positions, more specifically the one that's currently in front of you. Several members have conflicts and have participated as residents in the Planning Board process. So I'm not sure that the Planning Board's gonna get any project-specific feedback on building heights from the Center Village Committee.
It wouldn't hurt to talk to them, though.
Yeah, absolutely. They definitely are interested in talking.
I think, too, is one of the biggest, one of the biggest complaints or questions I have is them getting a bonus for the parking.
I think what he's talking about, Evan, is the 50%.
The 50%, right.
Which is, you know, part of the Center Village zoning. It's not for the project.
And my thought is that they were given that because we used to have a parking lot for the town, I mean...
It's part of the zoning there. It's not for this project. That's...
I'm not specifically saying this project at all. I'm just talking in general. I'm guessing that we had an ability to park...
Tim, you're likely correct. The Center Village zoning district, not the overlay, has been in place, I think, since 1998. That zoning district was the first to introduce the 50% parking reduction. You're likely very accurate that that was based upon this municipal lease for parking. I can attempt to go back into the Planning Board minutes, as well as the Town Meeting record minutes, to see if that was codified, but you're likely correct.
Okay, and the only reason I'm bringing it up is, say that one project goes through, and then it comes around, another project comes, and, well, they got this, and I just think it would be time, someone for us to look at it at this point.
Yeah, so I think, I think Center Village Master Planning Committee is interested in having that conversation with the Planning Board. You know, the current overlay that the Planning Board is reviewing projects under carried that 50% reduction from the underlying Center Village zoning district. But you're absolutely right, similar to inclusionary and the historic bylaw that you're discussing this evening. As the Planning Board knows, it always is good practice to continue to review current bylaws, and as, and as things change on the ground, bylaws need to be reviewed and changed accordingly.
Thank you.
Didn't we look at the density and availability of parking in the center here in the past year and decide that we didn't want to do any changes to it at this time?
I don't recall anyone reviewing it within the last year. The Center Village Master Plan, which dates back to 2013, did do a parking inventory and utilization study, which I think I've sent to the Board members as well as Center Village. I'll send that out again. It's fairly informative. And that may be a good starting point for both the Board and the Committee to review prior to a discussion. But there has not been, as far as I'm aware, there has not been a recent analysis.
It seemed to me we put this on the table for discussion and evaluation under Glenn's chairmanship.
The Board has recently discussed... Yes. The Board has recently discussed this issue. For whatever reason, we didn't circle back to it.
Does the, one last thing?
So at this time, that is, 50% is the bylaw. And because it is the by right bylaw, you really can't...
We already discussed that.
Do anything that imposes a higher level on a current, yeah.
Yeah, we already, yeah, we already talked about, we already talked about that. We're gonna take a look at it in the future. We can't take and talk about an individual development, but...
That's right.
Does the 50%, does it matter if it's residential or commercial, the project? It does?
The 50% only applies to non-residential.
Okay.
The residential is required to comply 100%.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
All right, down to meeting minutes.
Did you guys read them?
Before meeting minutes, I think you need to vote to continue those two public hearings.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, well, I will move to continue the public hearing on Stone, of Stonegate Construction to August 26th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would also move to
unanimous.
Continue the, the public hearing for North Star Realty, 236 Grotton Road, to August 26th.
Second.
Aye.
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 All in favor?
I have to abstain.
You have to abstain, yep. I'll abstain. All right, I looked at the meeting minutes. I didn't really find any problems. I don't know if anybody else has looked at them.
I think we're fine.
All, all right, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
I think we gotta do these individually, don't we? May 27, 2020, and then we gotta do the 2000...
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 27th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 10th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. No, I need another motion.
I would move, if the Chairman would consider my motion, that we adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
We're on for the 26th?
Aye.
Good.
That's it.